This time, I'm going to ask Ben Bowden if he'll say the implication.
Thank you. I guess please, I'm just so grateful to be able to be here this morning. You blessed us with a nation and a state and a county where we can meet and go over the business of the people, and we thank you for that. Please guide all our leaders as they endeavor to do what's best for the people. In Jesus' name, pray amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum presence this morning. Just let everybody know that Mr. Turman is sick, was not able to be with us. Mr. Elmore's wife had surgery yesterday, and he's not with us today. So at this time, I'd like to welcome all our guests and our news media to the meeting. We appreciate your interest. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
May I make a motion and adopt it? I'll second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be none motion carried unanimously. At this time, we do not have anyone on the agenda for public comments from citizens. So therefore, we'll go down to the public comments from public officials. We have the sheriff, Mr. Meeks, and our probate judge, Mr. Bowden. Do either one of y'all wish to address?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ben.
That will move into old business. I will call on Susan Carpenter, the EMA director, to discuss options for new safe shelters.
We have been working on the hazard mitigation grant. And there's been a lot of things changed with it. And Mr. Gowan came down to the office and asked about what was going on with it. And I told him I was going to present to y'all today some different options. And he asked me to speak in the commission meeting. But on the first page, you'll see the different plans. I tried to divide it out on the different ways that y'all have asked. Bill came and asked me to do two shelters. And then the bottom of C is the one shelter. And I'll just remind y'all, at the beginning of this grant, this was proposed to be for the EMA, kind of the shelter for the EOC. And that's kind of what we were aiming towards. And then we kind of moved it over to also a safe place for the county employees. With that, we looked at different shelters, like the one at LBW. And both me and Alan looked at those shelters and really was not satisfied. Yes, it's going to protect the people, but what we were wanting to do with it on our side, the EOC side, it just, it wasn't feasible. And I really wasn't happy with it, but I was still searching the different shelter companies. And we actually found a company, which you'll see the diagrams in the back. It's the one that has Plan A and C. That's the one I'm talking about. It actually could be used for EOC and actually fit the needs that we would have for the EOC. Well, once we got talking with that company, we had the engineer and the architect to come up and talk to us about the space that we had out here in the courtyard here. I invited Brenda and Bill, but they were not able to be here with him. But me and Alan met with him, and we're very excited about what he could do with that shelter right there in the courtyard. Actually have a breezeway coming out of the current EOC into the storm shelter so that, you know, we can work as long as we can in the EOC. And then when things get bad or we need shelter, we could just run into the EOC. Actually have a place to set up backup radios and have actually something functionable. So back when we were discussing all this and coming up with the different things to do, Bill met with some of y'all, I don't know who, I was not present in the meeting, and talked about two shelters. And that's what I got him quotes on at that time. But once dealing with this gentleman, we decided, you know, just looking at one shelter, making it bigger for the EOC. The first two, that Plan A, is the shelters that I like. It's that concrete building. And it's the two, it's the one that's larger and the smaller one, in which he asked me to look at for, over at the engineer's office. The Plan B is those shelters, like if you went over to LBW, the calm type shelters, that's what that is, which is a good shelter, but I just don't like it to try to have to work out of it as EOC. And then the C down here is a plan of just having one and having it bigger in the courtyard so we actually can have more room to work around. And yes, originally, when I talked to him, I had it even bigger than this. I had it to 16 feet, because that's how wide these buildings are. My EOC is 16 feet wide, and it's pretty cramped in there. And that's what I asked him to do me a first price on it. And it ended up being closer to $160,000. So what I was trying to do in my planning is, one, make sure I used all the federal money. That $125,000 is at the very top of your page, that's how much we have. $125,000. Make sure that our match was not very high. That's why I was trying to keep it low. That's why I made that shelter smaller. And those were what I was trying, and tried to get something that we actually could use. So that's why I was recommending that we do the Plan C, having the one shelter, having it larger, that we actually can work out of. We're talking with Bill yesterday. He did come up with a good recommendation that maybe just some of y'all could be appointed to work with me in trying to finalize what we need to do. There's no action that y'all need to take today. This is, this is what I just need to know from you guys to put in application. The application was due on the 17th. They've moved it back to the 29th. And if you remember with our meeting, we had about this. You know, I was in a panic about the bids being sent out. Well, once I got everything together, I talked to our state hazard mitigation coordinator, and she says, "No, you do not send out the bids after you're awarded this application." So that's why all that's kind of stopped. What we need to know is what we want. Have all the applications filled out by the 29th.
Let me make two comments. One is not that I was unhappy with it. I went back and reviewed the minutes of the previous meetings. And in that, we did give authorization to do bids. Also, it also, in that motion, was for two shelters at the same time. This is in the December meeting. So just to clarify that point. Don't particularly like the wording of, I did not like it. I was just trying to stay within the guidelines of what the commission had previously approved. So, you know, it looks like to me, you know, we can let bids and probably, I would recommend that we take bids on all three proposals.
We can't take bids now. We can't, we've got to fill out the application of what, I know this is backwards. That's why I was confused at the beginning. You have to have what company you want to use, how much it's going to cost, the design in the application, but you can't take bids to after FEMA tells you, "Okay, we like that application." So I don't need any action from you all. I just need to know what direction that y'all want me to go in on the application.
Let me ask you a question. When it's bided, we do not have to accept that bid, is that correct?
No.
Well, I think having a committee to help make the final decisions might be in order to do that.
I think so, too.
Well, I'd like to suggest that that committee be Ms. Petty, myself, and Ms. Cor, Ms. um.
I would like to request that it be some of the commissioners.
Well, we can meet as a committee as a whole. Is that permissible?
In other words, you don't want me on the committee, is that what you're saying?
I'd like somebody with open mind.
Okay. Excuse me, but I would like to make a correction about the commission doesn't need to take action on this. I tend to disagree with that. I only have 29 years of experience, so excuse me. The commission does need to either appoint an official committee and give them broad authority to change the scope of the project, because that's what you're trying to do.
No, I'm not changing the scope.
They voted for two. Listen, they voted two.
They voted to set bids out for two, but my original application.
Ms. Petty, can you pull the December meeting minutes, please?
What I'm trying to tell you is the original application for this hazard mitigation grant is for a EOC alternate place of going. That's how you set this grant up. That's the original plan, that's what I'm telling you.
I remember that. Well, I don't have a problem serving, I'll make it if I want to volunteer. That'll make life easier.
Would you like for me to see what the minutes say?
Yes, I think we need that clarification, because I don't want to do anything that's counterproductive.
Because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and confusion about what really happened.
And I might be part of it. Do we want to hold up the meeting for this, or we want to come back to it?
I'm going to hold a meeting in a bit until we can have that information. If you'll look on the document behind her, being on the agenda, you'll see the minutes for August the 14th, 2013. And you'll see the minutes for December the 11th, 2013. And I will refer you to the last sentence in the first paragraph, which says approximately $125,000 of a Babel in grant funding with the costs of both site built safer and estimated at $150,000. And also, you will notice that the next to the last sentence authorized the solicitation of bids for construction.
Right. But I think that process should change, I question.
I will recess the meeting until Ms. Petty has an opportunity to come back. The meeting will come to order. As I stated before, we have a action that's been approved by the commission to take bids on two sites. And that is the status right now, that not correct, Ms. Moody?
It appears to be from the minutes that are in this handout that that was the action taken. That would need to be changed to do anything different.
What I'm talking about, though, is the first meeting that we had about the, not that one. The first meeting that we had regarding the shelter. The focus was the EOC and the county's safering. After we had the meeting in there, that's when this meeting can take, took place, because that's when y'all decided to go with the two shelters. And then that's when the bid was sent out. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about my original application was for the EOC.
But you do not have that completed application, is that correct?
This is all just one application that we've taken different directions. And I'm trying to make sure we're on the same page so I can finish this application, have it to the state by January the 29th.
Well, let me remind you that nothing can be done without authority of the commission. And at this time, they have given you permission for two. Now, what if the commission desired to change that? We'll have to take the action that will affect that.
You've given me permission to send out bids for two shelters, yes.
I'll ask for clarification, Ms. Moody.
With this application?
That's what the action was. That is what the action was, according to our legal representation.
Right. So does that also mean that I can't do an application for a grant that's different than that bid? That bid doesn't have to be tied to my application?
Well, I think the understanding was the grant would be tied to what we requested.
I understand that. But like I said, we were going in different directions. We actually found a plan that would work. And I'm just asking y'all to do whatever it takes to make this plan work, that it actually can be feasible for the county.
Well, I will say this. I think due to the distance between the buildings, that two shelters is more workable, because we have the road department over there, our distance. And then we have this building, and then we have the jail. And I think that was the reasoning and for recommending two sites be done.
With the FEMA regulations on a, this is a community shelters, not, it's not like the individual shelters for your homes, where your individual shelters, they have to be at your back door so you can get in. The community shelters, they have a half mile radius around where that shelter is that you have time to get to it. So I think with that regulations, I mean, this one in the one location is feasible for the entire county employees.
It would have been nice to have known that when we were discussing whether we were going to proceed with one or two.
It'd been nice to have been in the meeting, I decided that, too.
Well, why don't we get a committee together and make a recommendation as to which plan we think would be the most feasible? And if we need to make some changes in it, do it so we can go forward with it. So I don't see a kind of a stalemate right now with it without.
I would recommend a committee of the commissions as a whole, along with Ms. Petty and with Ms.
Harris.
That's fine with me.
When we first done this, more or less was just a motion for you to start the application, right?
Right.
And then we just kind of, we looked at two, in other words, we done two, you know, looked at different ways of doing it.
Right. Which is fine, and I'm glad we did it, because I actually ran across accidentally this, this, which is so much better than what, where we were aiming for. I mean, if you ever worked with grants and federal government, there's changes, and you just have to be able, have open mind and go with it. And that's what I'm asking y'all to do.
If I could recommend something here, since you have the excerpt from December in front of you, you really should rescind this motion. Right now, you have a motion out here approving requesting bids. We were told there was a deadline. Pam and I worked extremely hard to get the specs typed up and the invitations out and had it to the newspaper ready to go until all of a sudden it was, everything changed. That's fine, we pulled it back. But this is a standing order of the commission that needs to be rescinded, amended, or done something else with.
Well, I'll make the motion that we rescind it.
Very good.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second that we rescind the action that was taken during the commission meeting on December the 11th, 2013. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. That all opposed, be none, the motion carried.
So is the commission that's working with me, is what we're we ended with that?
Of course, I know.
May I ask, I know I don't have an open mind, but I would like to ask a question. What is the deadline now?
January 29th, for the application.
For the application to go in. So right now, we have a couple of weeks for you to put together.
I have all the application complete. I just got to plug in the numbers and the design. All the other parts that I have to do is complete.
Okay, so is someone going to make official motion to, for this committee? And with its deadline in mind, to have this done by her deadline? In other words, your committee can't just be appointed today and then go away. Somebody's got to dig their heels in to help her get this done.
And if it is going to be everybody, it has to be an open meeting? So you need to set that, too? If it's going to be the entire commission or a majority of the commission?
And to have a special call meeting, we must give at least five days' notice before we can convene. Set a time. Unless I have a motion to do something, we will move on to the next.
So what you think, what is? I make a motion that we set a date to meet within the next few days to go forward with it. So whatever date, everybody can come, with the other two commissioners not here. I hate to set a date without them.
Would you give me any prerogative of coordinating with them to set the date?
Sure.
And let me understand the motion. See if I can restate it. The motion is that the commission will act as a committee as a whole to determine the type of public shelter to be constructed. And that they are to have their recommendation at a special call meeting no later than the 27th of this month. And the commission chairman will make the coordination to effect this meeting. Is that sufficient, Ms. Moody?
Well, if there, if this is a working meeting and everything's going to happen at one time, is that what you're saying, that this will be an official meeting? Or is it just going to be a working meeting?
It would have to take action, so it's going to have to be a meeting.
Right, have to be a meeting, but so the workings will all take place at this one meeting before the 27th, right? That's the motion. Got it.
Ms. Moody, give me that. I just want to be on firm ground of what we're doing.
It sounds as if you are doing that. If you have a motion, I believe Ms. Barton's made a motion to that effect.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried unanimously. With that, we'll move on to the next item of business. Now, we will go into new business. We will consider a motion to approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2013 regular meeting.
I'll so move. Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. The next item is have a motion to approve of the December accounts payable and payroll transfers.
May I make a motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Petty, is there any clarification that we?
I think it's just standard, routine stuff that went, you know, took place during the month of December. $1.9 million total.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. The next item to be considered is the transfer of a county vehicle to the state of Alabama Department of Public Health. As a background to this, we have been furnishing a vehicle for the person who inspects to be sure the countywide garbage pickup is in compliance. We have received notification from our insurance carrier, since the person that drives that vehicle is not a county employee, that we would either have to donate that vehicle to them or not furnish it. So would like to recommend that we declare this vehicle surplus and donate it to the state of Alabama Public Health Department.
I'll make a motion, will you donate this vehicle?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to declare this particular vehicle as surplus and donate it to the Alabama Department of Public Health. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There be none, motion carried unanimously. The next item of business is for an agreement to have the GASB compliant county financial statements prepared. I will call Ms. Petty to expound on this.
As y'all know, last year, the Examiners of Public Accounts made some huge changes in how they have to have certain, what's called the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, compliant statements that we had to prepare ourselves or either have someone prepare them for us. Luckily, Ms. Steele and I were able to get those done with a good bit of help from one of the examiners themselves. But I'm going to recommend that we have this, these statements for 13 prepared by Ms. Jenny Allen. She's a former audit manager with the State Examiners. She is recently retired and has agreed to help some counties out with these statements that are so difficult and very, very time consuming. The time factor involved in it is about as much as anything. But she's agreed to perform that work for us. Ms. Moody reviewed and amended this agreement to make it in compliance with, in compliance with, particularly the part about she would not be considered an employee. And Ms. Moody, by the way, she commented on your insight to that, because as a retiree, she needed that aspect included. So thank you for doing that for us. She's agreed to do these statements, which are very in-depth, for $3,000 in travel expenses. And I highly recommend approval of that.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, will you?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to enter an agreement with Ms. Allen to perform those duties. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there be none, motion carried unanimously. As you know, now we have a IT person employed by the county. And I, and reviewing our computer network and all our technology. There are certain thing, pieces of equipment that we're going to have to need to be in compliant with some other regulations. Therefore, it has been requested that we ask for bids for various computer equipment at this time, allowing Mr. John Donaldson to, uh, secure the information and request the bids. Is that... So, any comment or any motion or...
Well, I mean, I was, I was in on the meeting a little bit, or we talked a little bit, and so, it's one of these things that come hit us all of a sudden, I think. And we got to comply with it or be fined or whatever, so this is... And he's proposed some cost savings, I think. I think it's fair, you know? So I, I make a motion, we, uh, do what we need to do to get this taken care of.
And where your motion is to authorize the solicitation of bids.
Right. I'll second.
Mo, motion in sa, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there be none, motion carried unanimously. We do have two board vacancies occurring in February. One of them is William Blocker, who presently serves on the Southeast Alabama Reg, uh, Region Planning and Development Commission revolving loan funds. His appointment is up the fifteenth of February. Do I have a motion to reappoint him or someone else to that position?
I, I make a motion, we'll appoint him back, just have no doubt. I mean, is any, any thing we need to do, or just...
I only, I'm not sure, but I thought we were just announcing the vacancies in case someone...
If he needed, I think so. We had to take applications?
Uh, our next meeting will be before the, before the fifteenth, is that...
It will be before the fifteenth, and...
Okay, well, we just make it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Petty, for that correction. Also, there's a, will be a vacancy on the organ, OCAP, Organized Community Action Program. Uh, Ms. Linda Sconias is, uh, presently serving that position. So we'll ask the news media to publish this, that if anyone would be interested in serving, to please come by Ms. Petty's office and pick up the form to fill out, to let us know that they're interested in that. At this time, we'll take comments from the board.
I don't have anything.
We'll take reports from the staff, I've asked, uh, Mr. Kenny to report on our situation as a result of this extremely cold weather and what, how it's affected us.
Mr. Chairman, I need you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly state that, uh, me and my employees took all the precautionary measures we had to take for this freeze, this hard freeze we had over the past couple of days, and we have no county building issues with any, uh, damages or anything like that, everything's working properly and correctly. Uh, I hope the engineer has the same. We got problems at our office, we're gonna have water in the back bathroom, but... Oh, you don't, okay, well, we'll, we'll check on that. But I hadn't, I hadn't notified you. No, no major issues, that's the first one I've heard of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caps?
I don't have any.
Ms. Petty, anything else?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Moody?
Yes, sir.
I didn't forget you this time.
Thank you.
Well, you know, with this extreme weather, we, we, we did have a situation where we could've had some extreme problem, but thanks to our county employees, we was able to avert that, and I appreciate their time and effort for doing that. If there's not anything else, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
All in favor, stand.